.................................................................. Now, we're gonna put this meeting on hold for a minute and turn it over to the public hearing for community vote in the block grant program. And David, you are in charge.
Thank you. Tonight, we're here to get public comment on a budget modification for the city's 2012 CDBG program. They are considering submitting a modified budget to BCD to move the current balance of $50,000 that's in the sidewalk replacement program into the Chestnut Street project. Because we're moving all of the money out of that, that's why we have to give citizens an opportunity to comment on it. So, the new budget for Chestnut Street reconstruction with the 2012 budget, the $167,250.50. The other item on the agenda for the public hearing is the allocation of $47,021.67 of program income that the city has earned through payments to the housing revolving loan fund and some sale of lots that were cleared with previous CDBG funded projects. And we're looking at putting $10,000 of that into a planning activity for the identification of the targeted area for code enforcement. Chestnut Street reconstruction, we're looking at putting in the bulk of it, $25,091.27. And then the rest, the 30%, that's available, $11,106 to go to the clearance demolition activity. Does anyone have any comments on any of these budget modifications?
I just have to have a question. And it's just because I don't know. With the Chestnut Street reconstruction, where does it start? Where does it end?
The Chestnut Street project has several years of funding in it, and it starts at Front Street and goes to 10th Street. We're going to have it designed by the engineer to be, we'll go as far as we can go with what we have available. And then hopefully put additional funds in in the next couple of years.
I didn't know if we're just taking two blocks, two blocks?
We'd like to do the whole thing, which includes sidewalk replacement, curb replacement, removal of the trees that are tearing up the sidewalks, and then also milling and resurfacing the street. Hopefully, we can get the whole way. If not, we'll do as much as we can and then do the rest.
You can catch me.
Catch me. Okay.
I didn't know, just for the whole street or just a block or two of what I was asking.
Okay. Is there no other comments on that? We can adjourn the public hearing when you go back into regular session if you would take action to approve those budget modifications and allocation of appropriate income. And I do have a couple of things that aren't on the agenda, so if you wouldn't mind.
Want to do it now?
Well, we're done with the public.
Okay. Okay. So, the public hearing is officially over. We're back to council meeting. I would like to make the motion to approve the, well, everything is in front of you as far as the modifications on the block grant for the Chestnut Street project. Any second?
I'll say it again.
Snyder?
Yes.
Bartella?
Yes.
Tru?
Yes.
Aister?
Yes.
Okay. Today, we opened bids for the demolition of 310, 312 South Front Street and 702 Chestnut Streets. We received one bid from Steinbacher Enterprises. They were the ones that tore the houses down the last couple of times we did it. The bid was for $88,000. It was $88,000, here, it's $88,590. And the reason why it's so high is there are four very large trees at both of those properties, and it costs greater than $20,000 just to get those trees down. So, that's a big bulk of it. And the one at 310, 312 South Front Street is a large property. It's about twice the size of a regular house. So, that's the bulk of the extra funds, why it seems like it's quite expensive. The funds are available in your CDBG account to cover that contract, should you wish to award it. It's been reviewed by me and by our compliance analyst, ACDCOG, and everything checks out. And Lee, the engineer, was here for bid opening, and seemed to be satisfied with everything.
I wasn't that glad you were moving up, sorry, me. But it's kind of a deal.
Yes, yes. It is, the city, since it's the city's fund, you guys get to approve the contract. They have not heard the contract amount, because we don't meet until next week.
Right.
But it's really your decision, so it's up to you how you want to handle that.
What were the addresses here?
310, 312 South Front Street and 702 Chestnut Street.
That's a land lost block, or lots that?
Yes, they have permission from the neighbor to go in, from her property, to get that down.
I mean, what do we do with that after we have permission to build on it?
Well, that's one in an area.
Do you know how to build on anything that's landlocked?
The redevelopment authority is keeping those properties there for any future development that may happen in that corridor. It's a targeted corridor for redevelopment.
It's a brick house, though.
It is a brick house.
Can anybody look at it to see if it could be?
Yes, yes. Every time we put them on the list, we do have, the code office, obviously, and they inspect it. And then generally, we have a contractor, you know, residential rehab contractor, go in and look at them, and they give us their opinion on whether or not they can be rehabbed.
They'll report, though. It's kind of a thing in the report.
Right, I've never seen anything in writing. Somebody from the redevelopment authority usually gives us a report.
Joe, on the south side, the wall, the brick wall, it's probably built out, they're gonna get the string line on. Matter of fact, the contractor's concerned about that thing kicking when he goes and tear it down. They're gonna take a shorty in there. It is landlocked, that's why it's only cost us where it's at. They'll do it through and remove. He's hiding the joint property into it. Just a bad situation all over. It's been left out for years.
And we do, the goal of redevelopment authority, you know, at this point, working with town health, is when they acquire these abandoned properties that are lighted, they do.
What was the estimate to repair them? Did you compare?
No, we don't, if there.
Estimate to repair and estimate to tear down?
No.
Eighteen thousand, is that for a couple houses?
That's two houses, well, that's basically the three houses, because two, or 310, 312 is two houses, and then 702 Chestnut. So, that's for all of those. We did not get an estimate on repair, because if it is able to be repaired, they're gonna look at doing that, you know, first of all. But most of these are places that are in such bad condition from being emptied for so long, that there isn't anything you can do. Right now, the redevelopment authority operates by, if we acquire them, then they're gonna try to auction them off to private individuals, so they send them.
If you're private, what you can bring back.
Oh, I'm sure.
That's maybe a good answer, private.
If you have a willing buyer.
I hear that you're just.
Right. Yeah, you have to have a willing buyer, or you have to have funding to do it on your own, and then sell it to somebody, which the city obviously doesn't have that. But, I mean, if you had a willing buyer who wanted to rehab it, like I said, when we're acquiring them now through the city as the redevelopment authority, they are trying to auction them off. That way, if somebody does want it, somebody feels they can do something with it, you know, then they can buy it. But if nobody buys it at an auction, then we're gonna demolish it, if it's not rehabbed.
Is it able to be torn down and leave the foundation in? So, that we don't have to follow the set back, so we can still build on that foundation?
That's a question for you guys. I don't know the answer to that.
Can we pass, can we vote on this tonight, with the understanding that we want the redevelopment authority to look at it next week?
Yes.
Okay.
Sure.
They have the, I mean, they have numbers.
I can't, I just can't, for some reason, can't picture the property.
Oh, yeah, I mean, they chose the properties as a demolition, so they're well aware of that. They just haven't seen the bid. But we only got one, and there were three contractors here for the pre-bid, and there were half a dozen at least that had the plans. And this is a complicated job because of those trees.
Well, that's the right guy. Steinbacher's the right guy if you have that.
Yeah, exactly.
Heard the contract basically walked away from him because it's so difficult to take down. You don't want a chestnut street, the two pinots are massive. If you end up blocking the street off, they figure two days just to take the pinots down and clean them up. So, we go $27,000 off the 88, and then there's some costing incurred in there to redo the landscape and so forth with the property that they're going across to get to the property. This is the front street between Walnut and Linden, it's a middle block. It's a huge brick home that's been sitting there, oddly, but might care. Ten, ten years, Michael?
Since at least 2007.
Okay. So, it's been degrading the whole time, and the bulge in the side of the house is massive.
Okay. All right, so you asked him for a motion to accept the bid.
Yep.
And there's no issue that since he's the only guy that bid on it?
No, because we did our due diligence and followed the proper procurement policy for bidding it on.
And the fact that it is all block grant money, that's what makes, raises the price on it also.
Well, right, there's a lot of efforts that go with that funding, right?
I'll make the formal motion.
You second?
Second.
Yes.
Tru?
Yes.
Aister?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Okay. Finally, last time I was here, two weeks ago, I handed out a proposal for the data collection and trade mapping for the determination of the code enforcement area to concentrate on for code enforcement activity. Have you had a chance to review that, or would you like to table that until next meeting?
That's the municipal authority, the MUR, the Super Room, do together.
That's the thing with the municipal authority, the tax office, the treasurer's office, the code enforcement office, all, everybody working together to get all the data in one place. I mean, it would address a lot of things in the city besides just targeted code enforcement. You'd also be able to have a reference where you could look quickly and see what vacant properties do we have in the city, what tax the liquid vacant properties?
Does that have to be done tonight?
No, I'm gonna be here in two weeks.
I would actually just like to see what the municipal authority has, and talk about their layers and their system that they have right now.
Okay.
So, and I'll get ahold of somebody and invite, we know our meeting, but I'm just gonna see what's left. Unless, is that all right with you guys?
Okay. So, the motion that you took on the budget mod does put $10,000 into it, but I gotta send that to BCD anyway, so it'll take no while to get back to me, because everything does now, basically. And we can go from there. I'll be back in two weeks.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Is there any, not much on the agenda tonight, but are there any specific audience comment, anything on the agenda? Okay, SRI Resolution, New Year's Eve. Does everybody have a copy this week? Everybody has a copy, it's pretty simple. Whereas summary revivalization of nonprofit 501(c)(3) sponsoring the New Year's Eve celebration. Be it resolved in the noise ordinance requirement is listed in chapter of the city code. It's hereby waived until 1:00 a.m. on January 1st, and the open container ordinance requirements shall actually be waived also. This is exactly what we did last year for last year's. For people that did not get the opportunity to go to last year, I highly, it was a huge success in, you know, barring the weather, which we're never gonna be able to control, you know, it'll be a good time, should play on attending it. But I made a motion that we accept the resolution to change those two things to allow for this celebration.
Second.
Tru?
Yes.
Aister?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Bartella?
Yes.
Are you able to pay invoices?
Yes, and everyone should have received their voucher reports by email prior to the weekend. Looking to take care of our outstanding payables, a general fund in the amount of $82,694.56. Now, the liquid fields account, $1,259.46.
Formal motion?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Aister?
Yes.
Aister?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Bartella?
Yes.
Tru?
Yes.
Okay, under discussion, the only thing we have on the agenda is the animal control. And there's the gentleman who brought that up last meeting. We have copies of Northumberland's. I'm gonna ask council tonight, I don't, Northumberland wants to even take that a step further and get involved throughout the county. They're putting a meeting together for other communities in Northumberland County that may be interested in going a step further. I don't believe we're anywhere close to approving anything. My issues with what, and the answer to your question, my issue with them is I can't understand how they think they're gonna fund it, and that's why I'm gonna go to the meeting just to see where they're at. I recognize we have an issue, you're not the only person that's ever complaining about the stray cat issue in the city, but it's, you saw theirs, it's 18 pages and stuff.
Right, but I mean, it's easy read. I mean, it pretty much says, it says, it's three done, it's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah.
I mean, they're looking to do two things. They're looking to discourage outside feeding and require licenses for all cats you own. And if you feed them, then you own. I mean, that's basically the foundation of these, I guess. I've never been involved in a process like this, but I was shocked, and I don't know that I know anybody in the room, but when I left here after the last meeting, went to my car, at least six people came up to me and said, from the meeting, "We've gotta do something about this. It's time to do something about it." I found that kind of astonishing, that they're representative of the people of Sunday. You know, I again say something, yes, will be done, and I guess my question would be, obviously, it seems like you're doing some work, and you guys have to read this, of course, but what happens from this point? You know, moving the polls?
Well, I personally, and these guys can speak for themselves, I personally want to know how they're making out their enforcement. I mean, their code talks about the police department and the code office actually catching the animals, but we would have no way to do that, with manpower to do that, and what are we gonna do with them when we catch them? And my biggest thing, I agree with what you're saying about the feeding them, I think that would be enforceable, that's not a work that you do.
And the licensing.
And I like that, and that's not, that's not a bad thing either. But when you start to catch them, and who's gonna, and supposedly they're gonna get donations or raise money to get the animals fixed, and you're talking an awful lot of money.
I agree that, that's what I go to the city.
So, I wanna see how, they haven't had theirs in too long, but I just wanna be able to talk to those people personally and see what they think will work and won't work, and I could foresee us in the near future passing something, I don't know if it'll be 18 pages like yours, passing something. And I guess these guys can speak for themselves, but we, in other words, I guess I'm trying to guarantee that we're gonna continue on looking into it.
Okay, just, so I haven't understood any parameters of time with that. I mean, would we be able to look into it by next meeting?
I don't mind the as of meeting schedule. The mayor of Northumberland has a meeting scheduled, but I don't know, I don't think that's for two or three weeks yet.
What do you mean, he has a meeting scheduled for the whole county?
He has a meeting for different communities that want, they wanna be involved in this. And there might be other ones out there that have, that already have ordinances in effect for the cats, I don't know. That's all we're looking for. We just wanna, I personally just wanna make sure, I agree with you, I think someone gets that.
We do the right things with your chances.
Yeah, we just wanna make sure we can, we don't wanna pass something we possibly can enforce, but we, but I see the outside feeding, 'cause you see that, I walk a lot in the city, and you see that a lot, a lot, especially on abandoned properties. Neighbors will go out their back door and sit two hails or pots, or whatever it may be, on the other, on the other, not even their own property, just to.
I bet as many as 25% of the residents of, you know, where it's concentrated area have an issue with that, so.
I walk out back door, and there's cats laying on my outdoor furniture, and that makes me imagine a room you can imagine. And then, you know, because next thing you know, you get the air, you got the smell, because they're wild dog cats. And believe me, I trapped them already. I took them up personally up to the SPC up in Danville. I also trapped two of them, and also had, because they were sick, took them out there in the hospital, and they put them down for us. I mean, I just wish everybody would do the same thing I'm doing, you know? You see a cat, try to get him, try to get him in the right hands, you know? But it's tough, but a lot of people don't wanna do that, and for us, the fund is gonna be tough. Maybe by everybody getting together in the county, my point of view, more on board on this boat, might be a better situation for everybody. And we might have the funding, we might be able to come up with, you know, a good solution because these cats, it's a major problem.
But maybe you crawl before you run, no pun intended, but, you know, if you could do those two things, maybe as a first step, you know, licenses and the forbidding of outdoor feeding, I think that would be.
I thought at one time, a couple of years ago, I could have been back when I was the head of the code office 12 years ago, or 14 years ago, when I first came on, that we looked into trying to license cats, and I think, I could be wrong, I don't think you can do that because of being a wild animal, and the state doesn't mandate that. I could be wrong, but I remember that being told by the State Department, matter of fact, we looked in, told them we were down at the stairs meeting, and it felt like an issue was going on, we were caught up about the cats.
Don't domesticate the cats.
Cats, no, because it's considered a wild animal, you don't enforce licenses of cat feedings.
But I mean, that is part of the, of the laws of the law.
Funny license. Like, just because, I'm not gonna call it, but it may be wrong, you know what I'm saying? It might be in order to say you might be forced. I'm just, I don't know, I know it's a tough situation, I mean, it's, it also, I feel like, I feel like, direct you to know your condition, and it's a problem, it's a problem that happens, that's when I walk out back and I smell, I have to fill away my cushions from lunch, almost every day, I guess.
I mean, we don't have to go over everything that I mentioned last time, but there's certainly, I mean, there's legitimate issues. I mean, if somebody's immunocompromised, which has to be the case here, I mean, it's a mountain, you know, spreading a disease.
Okay.
Rabies is more prevalent in the cat population than it is the dog population.
Well, sir, I go for the next meeting to at least have a part of that to pass.
Okay.
If it's just feeding them outside, what I agree with, even if you just stop feeding them outside, wild ones, with some sort of a fighting system, you at least have something to get started off with.
Okay.
Yes, sir?
Unfortunately, I wasn't here for that, but if somebody owns cats, your own's had your own, and they have to be taken more and more in, that they are in their house or wherever, and then they leave them out, is that, are you talking about that too, or is that being?
Well, when he talks about licensing the way Northumberland does, if you're doing that, then you can do that if all those cats have collars on them and they have licenses, they're your cats.
Right.
But if you're, if you're just feeding the neighbors, putting cats that are running around, there's none of them have collars on them, you're feeding wild cats, and that's a wild eastern ordinance.
We just have somebody down there, they keep giving cats to when they keep working them out, puts collars on them, and you don't get them fixed, but they're all out, they're not in.
I believe they have to be on a leash, according to, according to these ordinance, they're not able to be run, to run free on others' properties. I mean, dogs can fence in, obviously, so.
I mean, in my case, I've got three dogs, and I have to have all of them licensed. If one, if my German shepherd wandered into our neighbor's garden and left surprises the way my neighbor's cats wander into ours, leaving surprises, I'd be in trouble. And that's part of the issue when it comes to the health impact. You get tired of going out and trying to clean your garden and do your flowers, and next thing you know, you get a handful of mess, because your neighbors leave their cats out to wander. And honestly, whether they're licensed or not, isn't really an issue in that situation. It's a matter of your neighbors keeping their cats on their property.
Right.
If they let their cat out, they ought to either have it on a leash, or they ought to have a fence, no different than the way I have to for my dogs. Now, at the same time, as a conscientious pet owner, if I see a dog wander around the neighborhood, you always try to go get, shut the dog, check if it has a license on it, does it have a tag? You call the neighbor, and you try to take it back. In the situation of cats, you know, like Kevin said, most of the time, they don't have any type of collar. You don't know who they belong to, and your only option is to take them to the SPCA. And unfortunately, the SPCA gets inundated with cats, and most of the time, they'll tell you candidly if you get them outside, they don't want them. And they only have one alternative with most of them, that's to put them to sleep, and that takes away from the financial stability of the organization to take care of animals that they can actually pass on. So, it's a sad story when actually people just can't keep their own animals in their own yard. So, having an animal tagged, I think, is part of the solution. You've got to tag it. Two, then, if it gets out of your property, at least you have a chance that your neighbor may return it. But understand that if you are an unprotected or unthoughtful owner of your pet, and you tag it, and you let it wander too frequently, the odds are it's not gonna come home. At some point in time, somebody's gonna either do the wrong thing, which is dispose of it the way they feel they should, or two, they're gonna take it to the SPCA, and it's gonna be gone. So, with any luck, through a little bit of education, awareness, getting people just to keep their animals in their backyard, you know, if there's a solution to this, it's a mandate across the board. If you have a pet, you have it tagged, and it stays on your property, period. If it's outside of your property, once, twice, you might get forgiven, no different than a nuisance or anything else, loud noise or obnoxious fumes coming off your property. But if your cat or your dog wanders too frequently, the odds are you're gonna lose your dog, or you're gonna lose your cat.
What do you mean, Northumberland is a comprehensive animal ordinance? You know, it's not the biggest, the cat.
But how many of them are forced in? You hear, you ask how it's working for them, how they're enforced in, how many citations they wrote, how many arrests they make on it? I mean, you know any of that?
I had a conversation, I had a conversation with them prior to the last meeting, and I don't have any statistics, you know, to share, but I know that it was creating a lot of emotion in Northumberland, and to me, you know, I come from somewhat of a position of theater, but I think when there's a threat of entitlement, and there's monetary fines associated, that it's gonna curb some people's, they can not, granted, as effectively as you can enforce it, to greater, you're gonna change that, okay? But, you know, whether there's fails or not, or works or not, I don't think that, I hope that doesn't totally direct your efforts, because maybe you guys can do a better job, but I understand wanting to gain feedback for it, so maybe not make the same mistakes. I mean, to me, you know, I just get back down to the basics. It's not right, how Snyder, we've said that, it's not right, infringe upon your neighbors' making choices, so, I mean, I can do that, of course.
We'll see how much we can get together for the next meeting, and then we'll talk about the next meeting. Try to at least get part of it.
Thank you. You should.
Yes, sir?
Yeah, I just wanted to, just wanted to say a couple things on this, is that, one thing to what Kevin was saying is, is that just because.
I'm sorry, I need your name for the.
Oh, Drew Bingerman.
Okay, go ahead.
Just because you guys pass an ordinance doesn't mean it's illegal. It's legal, like he was saying, that that ordinance is legal and enforceable, meaning even enforceable per state law. So, that if you can't license them, or that the state doesn't recognize that you can license cats, then you pass an ordinance, like Northumberland seems to have, then if somebody fights a fine or something, they take it to court, you're gonna get, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a big mess. It's gonna be a bunch of trouble that way. So, what, you were exactly on point with that one, Kevin. So, so there's that. The other, the other thing with the cats is, is that we're talking about not just the cats that people have in their homes and let them out, but also the significant feral population that's gonna keep repopulating, that's out there, that is just playing wild altogether. Right, 'cause I know there's a significant portion of that in certain portions of the city where, where they'll hole up and, you know, 'cause we do also have a significant rabbit, wild rabbit population in the town, but they have, they have, they have their own food source right there with those, and the wild rabbit population is wild rabbits and we have birds that they can eat. So, there's wild cats, period, at this point. So, unless you take, take the active approach of actively capturing the cats and going that, going to that extent, even pushing to people to the point of stopping to feed them, you're never gonna get to the, to the feral population. And I think that's a big portion of it at this point, even if we have a significant, even if we have some people that are feeding them, that, yeah, does that, does that make it worse because we have people feeding them? Yeah, but I, I mean, this town has, I mean, where we are in, in town here, I see the, I see more rabbits around here than I, I see almost as many rabbits as I see cats. So, you know, that's, that's something that, you know, maybe.
Are you going to say that if you eliminate the food source?
No, I'm not saying that you eliminate the food source. I'm just saying that there are, there is a wild population of cats, just as there is a wild population of natural food sources for them, birds and, and rabbits. And, and they will, they will continue to reproduce unless, you know, that something is done.
I understand, I understand. But if I live in a half a double and my neighbor lives in a half a double and has bowls of food right there, that's the food source. If I eliminate that food.
That isn't the only food source.
Agreed. It's less likely that that number of cats is going to follow those patterns and do things in my yard.
But they're wild animals, sir. They, they will go find, they're, you know, that's, I guess that's the point that I make is, they're wild animals, they will revert to their, because there is.
I just want to add here's, I just want to add here's, that's exactly what Mayor Zeboree is trying to do when he talks about countywide, it's a feral cat population.
Right, exactly. It's not just the, yeah.
It's two different issues, okay. Any discussion? Yes. Wait, 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 you have a lady in the back here?
There is an organization that comes every couple of months, they, they pick up cats, they have them spayed, you put them back out.
Spayed or?
Not like free.
Yes. I guess some mystery, yes. They'll get them and whatever, they fix them, they put them back where they got.
Cats, cats, cats.
Names of the, be a bit of a dog.
It's trap, neuter, and release. Dog is a minute.
And maybe that's what Northumberland uses, we'll, I'll find out from them what they're using. All right, I'm sorry. Go ahead. You have a lady?
Good evening, Gina Russell, community activist, and I would like to say hello to Mr. Mayor and the council. I guess some of you will be here after the election and some of you won't, so I'd like to thank everybody for their services to the city. I'd like to start with a question for Councilman Snyder, he wasn't here one time when I had asked you, Mr. Mayor, about how much money had been collected from the demolitions and just to get an account, accountability of the monies collected. And the mayor wasn't certain how much money we had gotten from those houses.
Oh, you're talking in relation to the redevelopment authority and the demolition cost versus the actual sale prices?
Yes.
That actually means something that we'll have to talk to the redevelopment authority on. Obviously, I don't have that in front of me this evening, but it's easy enough to get. Did you go to redevelopment?
No, sir, I came to you and now I'm speaking to the councilman.
Okay.
That's how it's typically. I, I would want to address another thing also about the repairs to the wall. With the county, and I want to presume that, I know the city has its own budget, but with the city, it seems like everybody is, has a financial problem around the country and I don't see how that would not affect Sunbury. So why would we want to put the city in more debt for $300,000 to repair the wall instead of taking the advice of the Army Corps of Engineers who surveyed the wall, said that it could, you know, get by, I guess at this time with repairs? And why would it take this long to do the repairs when it should, that the wall should be monitored on an annual basis so that if there are any areas that need to be repaired, it can be addressed at that year and not wait 10 years after to do any type of repairs?
All right, we're going to let Councilor Ister answer that. First of all, just let me correct one thing, note the city's not going $300,000 in debt now. Mr. Ister will explain how that process is going to work.
Yep. The funding that I mentioned the last time, the feds are dealing with roughly $55,000. This full thirty has $100,000. The $300,000 was an estimate.